Okay, good morning and welcome to the October 17th, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting for the County of Lake. We'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of silence. I think the biggest thing that we're all thinking about is our hearts are really going out to everything that's happening in the state of Israel. It's a humanitarian crisis, really more than a lot of our souls can bear to think about. And there's so much human suffering happening over there. So we'll dedicate this moment of silence to that unless there's anything else from the other supervisors. Okay. Craig, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
Oh, you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any extra items to consider that are not on the agenda?
No, Chair, we do not.
Okay. Then we will move on to consent. Do we have any items that need to be pulled? Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, I'd like to pull items 5.5, 5.14, 5.15. And if you don't mind my checking my email real quick, I don't know if I got a response from a specific individual, but it doesn't look like it. I'd like to also pull item 5.18.
Anyone else? Any members from the public?
You may have pulled it. I was talking to someone about pulling the agenda item that has to do with the trees that are being taken down, the dead trees for $4,000. Is that one that you pulled? I'm sorry, I'm looking through this quickly and can't see that one.
Are you talking about 5.2?
Yeah. Let's see. Engineering Council and Consulting. And the rebel. Yes, I think that's it, thank you. And according to the Brown Act, it has to be heard today, I was told, so I'm just checking in.
Okay, anyone else? I will bring it back to the board fraction.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 5.2, 5.5, 5.14, 5.15, and 5.18.
Second.
That's good, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we have a few minutes until our first timed item, so we will go to 7.2, consideration of the following advisory board appointment, Food Policy Council. This is from the clerk of the board, and the recommendation is to appoint Chris Shoneman to the Food Policy Council, Supervisor Sabatier.
And so Chris Shoneman from Canuckta Unified School District will be the representative of education on the Food Policy Council, if approved.
Okay, any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All right, I'll bring it back to the board fraction.
Madam Chair, move to approve Chris Shoneman to the Food Policy Council.
Second. Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we have one minute to wait. Okay. Just hold tight for a minute while we wait for 9:06. Our 6.1 item, public input. If anyone in the chambers has anything they'd like to come up and give public input for, you can state your name and have three minutes.
Good morning, thank you. My name is Craig Weatherby, Lake County Environmental Health. I'm joined by Chief Seansio, North Lake Shore Fire. And we wanted to talk a little bit about the accident that happened on Highway 20. This was an overturned big rig containing cattle. It was certainly an experience that none of us were prepared for on a Friday afternoon ahead of a three-day weekend. And we didn't want to go through details of what happened, but we did want to reach out and express our gratitude to the community. At one point in time, there were 32 vehicles, both emergency vehicles and private vehicles, there to assist. A lot of cattle unfortunately died, however, not all of them. And the living ones survived solely because the community responded in a big way. When the call went out that we needed trailers, we needed trucks, and we needed people, the community showed up. And when I say showed up, I mean people brought U-Haul trailers. It was everything you could hope for from a community in a response to a situation that, I don't know, did you ever get training on cattle?
First one?
Yeah, it's not in the environmental health handbook on how to handle live cattle and unfortunately carcasses. So I wanted to reach out and talk to you and just say that we have one of the most amazing community of people, that it's why we live in a rural community, right? Because you can always count on people to help when the time is, when it's time. I wanted to call out a couple of very important pieces that weren't on scene, but without their help, we couldn't have got the job done. And that was our Public Services Director, Lars Ewing, who made it possible to get the landfill available so we could get some of these cattle put away, and Public Works. We had some trouble figuring out how we were going to move these cattle from the location to the rendering plant, and turns out the county has trucks. So Public Works, without them, we would not have been able to get that job done. They got us a driver on a day off and got us a truck and got somebody there at 6 o'clock in the morning on Saturday as well, on their day off. Without their help, without Scott Harder and Scott Hornig at Special Districts, Public Works, and Public Services, we would not have got that job done. I just wanted to say thank you to them.
Hello, Mike Seansio.
Hold on one second. I just want to make sure you get your full three minutes.
I'll make it, I'll make it quick.
Oh, get three minutes? All right, thank you, Chief.
Yeah, Mike Seansio, North Shore Fire. This happened in our district. In 36 years, I've never had one of those happen. We have a lot that go up and down, not only cattle trucks, but other things that go up and down Highway 20 from the valley, Sacramento Valley, to the 101 corridor. Shows how important it is to be kind of all risk. And for certain, there's room for improvement on this call and, but I agree with Craig, we couldn't have done it without the help of the community. And this is not the first time that the community stepped up and come to, to help. Doesn't matter if it was cattle, doesn't matter if it was, you know, just regular hobby farm type stuff, it doesn't really matter. It matters that we had the experts there that were not first responders. And so, very appreciative of everyone that came out. We had people from three counties respond as volunteers. Mendocino, people came as far away as from Orland. So we had a lot of help on that one. Like I said, room for improvement, but we'll be, we'll be reviewing that and we'll be prepared for the next one. So the last one was 20 years ago, almost to the month. So that's how often it, or not often it happens. Unfortunately, it's our responsibility to try to respond. So thank you, and thank you to the community that helped out.
Thank you both for coming in today, and we do live in an incredible place. It's whenever the community is needed, they always step up. So thank you so much. Do we have anyone else for a public comment?
Good morning, everybody. I'm Skylar Lewa. I'm with Pillsbury Family Farms, and we recently just had a cannabis inspection, which is to be expected. What was not expected was to have the employee who come out clearly violate Penal Code 632, which is where when somebody comes to your property, they have to get your consent to record. We were recorded without our consent. They did not ask us for permission. They did not ask our other owners for permission. They did not notify us. So we just wanted to make the county aware that that is a crime. That was a crime that was committed by a county employee. And there's not only that, this county employee also admitted that the cannabis program manager is intimidated by one of our disabled founders, who comes here and speaks up about the transparency and the integrity of county employees. And we just wanted to bring that to your attention, that this is what is going on within your own county, and we are not okay with this. We checked our conditions of approval. There is nothing in there that says the county has the legal right to record us on our own property during these inspections. So if this is something that the county is going to start doing, the county needs to pass a resolution and make it known to all of the cannabis farmers, that when they come out, they are going to be recorded, an email needs to be sent, and all of the parties who are on the license need to be notified, and it needs to have everyone's consent to be recorded. I just wanted to let you guys know, thank you.
Thank you. And did you go and submit a complaint in our admin office?
I got four of them.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Very good.
Anyone else with public comment? Anyone in the Zoom room? Come on up.
Hi, Laura Ly Franco. I live in Spring Valley. That's a tough act to follow. I just wanted to say, I actually also work for the library over at Red Bud, that I was noticing on the website about the library, that there was a library advisory board, and I was wondering how come all the seats are vacant? And so I was kind of curious about that, and that's all. I'm not interested in being one, but I was kind of hoping that maybe those would get filled, because I feel like, you know, community participation is very important in terms of getting, you know, the right stuff going on, so that's all.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We can look into that. Anyone else? Anyone in the Zoom room? Okay. One of you come up to the microphone?
Elaine Brown, educator. Just to speak to that person's complaint, Jerry Brown did sign, Governor Jerry Brown didn't sign into law that it's illegal to record someone.
Okay, thank you. Joan?
Joan Moss, citizen. I am disappointed I didn't make it in time. I wanted to pull the consent agenda 5.1, I think it is, the tree mortality? Was it already pulled? And last time, when I pulled that item in the morning, I was never called on in the afternoon for a public discussion of that consent agenda. I waited all afternoon, and it was supposed to be brought up according to the, I believe, according to the Brown Act. Thank you.
Well, I would have to get a motion from the board to reopen consent. The last time you did pull it, we did bring it up at the end of our, yes, we did. We could check the minutes, we can check the video, but we did, and you weren't here. And at the end of the day, we have to, you know, we have to close out the meeting, and that was an outstanding item, and we did address it. So I would have to get a motion from the board to reopen consent and pull an item.
I think we pulled the item she wants. It's 5.2.
Well, the 5.2 is, well, there's two.
It was a declaration.
She wants to pull the declaration.
I don't know that that was clear.
Which item? Can you give us the number? And come back up to the microphone, please. Probably 5.9, that's the emergency.
Sorry.
Yes, it was 5.9, thank you. I had the wrong number anyway, but it was 5.9, thank you.
Madam Chair, move to reopen the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 5.2, 5.5, 5.9, 5.14, 5.15, and 5.18.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. So you're going to have to be here the whole time.
I tried, I waited and waited.
I know, I know. We've got a lot of consent items to pull today, so I think we'll be doing that as soon as we get through our short agenda. Okay. I think we're done with public input now. We'll close public input. We have 6.2, our 9.7, nine, sorry, our 9:07 a.m. item pet of the week, and we have a little kitty.
Hello, my name is Serena Kopus with Lake County Animal Care Control. Today, we brought Raven. She is part of our costume contest that we started online. As of right now, she's winning, but we'll keep it open for a little bit. She's not quite available yet, but she is very spunky, very sweet, and we thought she would be great to bring here today. We have a bunch of animals for adoption right now. We also have some cats that are reduced price for adoption. If you'd like to see any of them, they're at 4949 Hellbrush Drive in Lakeport behind the county jail, and our phone number is 707-263-0278.
That is so cute.
Aw, Raven, you are just too. Oh, my God. Oh, God.
That's a good one.
You're going to win, Raven, I know you are. Look at her. Look at the other way.
She's like, no, too much.
Thank you so much for joining us today. Good luck, Raven. All right, our 6.3 item, 9:10 a.m. presentation of proclamation recognizing the month of October as Head Start Awareness Month in Lake County. And so everyone from Head Start, if you want to come on up, or anyone. Don't worry, we're going to have our picture taken by Sam. Well, thank you for joining us today, and thank you for making the trip. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, proclamation designating the month of October 2023 as Head Start Awareness Month in Lake County. Whereas established nationally in 1964, Head Start is a national federally funded early childhood development program that serves children and families whose purpose is to help children achieve their full potential. And whereas Head Start provides comprehensive health, nutritional, educational, social services, family and community development, and meaningful powerful and parent, meaningful parent involvement. And whereas Head Start focuses on children's language development, early literacy, social skills, and providing their parents the skills in becoming their child's first and best teacher. Whereas Head Start is committed to the development of each child and provides preventative and early intervention services to children and families regardless of their economic status. Now therefore, the Lake County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Head Start Awareness Month. Be it further resolved, Lake County Board of Supervisors recognizes that the needs of children and families in Lake County must become a top priority for future decision makers by investing financial resources and talent in the support of health, mental health, educational disabilities, early education, or early childhood education, child abuse and neglect, and family trauma sensitive care. Be it further resolved that the Lake County Board of Supervisors encourages all parents of preschool-aged children to participate in literacy activities such as reading a book with your child, attending a play with your child, and going to the library with your child during the month of October, passed and adopted the 17th day of October 2023. So we were recently at the North Coast Opportunities Board Retreat, and we were having a presentation on Head Start. And it's just so incredible to see the graduates, the children that began in the Head Start program so long ago, stepping up and becoming leaders. And leaders in our community, leaders across the state, leaders across the country, and that's because of the hard work that all of you do and the importance of this program. So I, I was really touched by that, and I want to open it up and see if anyone here would like to make any statements.
I'd just like to take a moment to thank not only Head Start here today from NCO, but also our immigrant Head Start and our early Head Start, who also serve our communities here in Lake County. Our early childhood educators, especially in this field, really do a lot of work for a little bit of money. And they are moving the needle for many of our most vulnerable children so that they can actually become successful, as you mentioned. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, we'd just like to thank the Board of Supervisors for this proclamation. As you can see, NCO has staffed with some amazing people and are doing a really fantastic job, and we're just so proud to have them a part of the NCO family, and thank you for today.
Thank you. All right, anything from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
I'll just say, it starts at age zero, and you are providing a service that supports the foundation of someone's future life, and I appreciate what you've been doing, especially throughout COVID. I think that your program has become that much more important as we saw a lot of doors close, providing the type of services that you provide. So thank you so much for being strong, pulling through, and always being there for the community.
Kids retain most at those ages as well, so it's awesome.
Okay, anyone from the public?
Hello, I'm Elise Jones. I'm the Director of Behavioral Health Services, and I just want to personally thank each one of you. I know that you don't make nearly enough money. There isn't really a price that you can put on what you do for these young kids, and I know that it's a calling. I myself don't have that calling. I'm really grateful for people that do. And I've always joked, but it's not really a joke, that once you've parented or raised a kid through the first five years, it's pretty much, that, that's really the bulk of the parenting, because so much takes place. I wish that our society valued this a lot more, not this community, this isn't a comment on that, but just in general. So I just want to personally thank you for everything that you're doing, and the work that you're doing, really, it's incredible. And we see it in mental health, when people didn't get the support that they needed at that early age. We pay for it, and so just thank you so much.
Laura McGandrew-Sammell. I'm with the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, and you might think, what's a business lady here talking to early educators? But I was at the One Team One Dream competition this weekend, and one of the winners was a woman that runs a small preschool. And I was talking with her and reminding her, and also perhaps you, what an important thing it is to have early education to the economy, right? Because you guys are training young children to be well-adjusted, educated adults that are going to be a tremendous part of our workforce in not too far in the future. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone in Zoom? Oh, come here, come here.
Laura Ly Franco, again. I participate with Firewise, and I just want to thank you for your participation with the Neighbor Fest. And then also, there's another program that I really think is amazing. It's the Build Program, where you can earn and learn at the same time, but, you know, learn construction and stuff like that. I think that's fantastic.
Anyone in Zoom? All right, would you take our hand or not? I want us to have the job of baseball.
Well, I guess it makes me look weird.
Well, no, I just, people move.
Supervisors, do we have you? Yes, okay, ready? There we go, I missed somebody, so let me do that. Okay. Got it, thank you.
Our 6.4, 9:15 a.m. item, administer the ceremonial oath of office to Chief Public Defender, Raymond Buenaventura. I state your name.
I, Ray Buenaventura.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will pursuant to California Government Code Section 27706.
And that I will pursuant to California Government Section 27706.
Well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. If I could have, Madam Chair, a few moments. First, I want to say how humbled and grateful I am for this opportunity to be your new Chief Public Defender. I take this obligation with great humility, but also with great confidence that together, I really do believe we can change and have a premier indigent defense program, a public defender's office in this county. When I came into your Board of Supervisors meeting this morning, I just, I felt at home. I've never seen a cat in a Board of Supervisors meeting before. The way you started with the cattle and the fire and the community, I'm in the right place, and I, I feel right at home here, and I think we can, I can do a good job with your help. As you rec- As you recall, during the interview process, I asked for help. I asked that if you would invite me to your different communities. And that is what I want to do. I've got nothing to do at night. And so I have plenty to do during the day, but I would really love it if I could reach out to your individual communities, your districts, with an invitation from you, maybe come along with you. Whenever you have an event or a group that you would like me to meet, I'm absolutely willing to do that. And that's what I want to do. For those members of the public, if you want to invite me, I haven't memorized my phone number yet, but I can give you my email, which is ray.buena-ventura@lakecountyca.gov.
Lake County.
I'm sorry. Lake County. So it's R-A-Y dot B-U-E-N-A-V-E-N-T-U-R-A. So, you know, having, you know, as I meet people here, you have a lot of great people. I've already met some fantastic people. I think it's given me a lot of hope that we really can do something special here in Lake County. And so I'm eager to get to work. You can reach me at any time. And I'm just, I'm just so grateful for this opportunity. So again, I want to thank you. I want to thank the community. And again, my door will always be open. And I know you have a lot of work to do, and so do I. So thank you again, everybody, and I hope to meet with you again very soon. Thank you.
We are excited and delighted that you're here and looking forward to some real change. And we know that, we have a lot of confidence in you, and we're happy to move forward as a team. And I'm sure we'll all be available to show you around our districts and introduce you to people and take you into our communities.
Great.
Is there anyone else on the board? No?
Welcome to the team.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I just want to thank you. Also, thanks to people in the room here observing this, and also those people on the fourth floor who aren't able to be here today, who have also chimed in from time to time. I appreciate your vision and leadership as we move ahead. But I think you know as much as anybody that it's going to be a team effort to improve indigent defense here in the county. And so this is a great day and an important starting step. But it is just that, it's a start, and we look forward to your work.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So I'm going to open it up to the public, see if we have anyone from the public who wishes to make comment. Anyone in the chambers or the Zoom room? Not seeing anyone, so we'll just close this item. And welcome and thank you.
Thank you, everybody. See you soon.
Excuse me, Chair. Would you like a picture with the new?
Oh, yes, let's do a picture.
Go ahead. I wasn't out yet, so go ahead.
It's not art, Sam.
I know, I know.
Yeah. Probably looks better. Thank you. It's using me. Okay, great. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Don't want to spill that drink.
Okay, our next item, timed item, is 10:15, so we have a little bit of time to hit some of these pulled items. So we'll start with 5.2, and we'll just go down the list. Okay, so 5.2 is pulled. Come on up. It's the item that you pulled.
So I was just wanting to know, is that the area?
I'm sorry, let me read the item. 5.2, approve amendment number two to the agreement between the County of Lake and Mountain G Engineering, Inc., for consulting services for development of Lake County Hazard Tree Removal Program in the amount of $42,000 and authorize the chair to sign.
Okay, that's good. So that is, is that the removal that's happening around in Black Forest area where they're taking down trees?
No.
That's not that area? Okay, so this is just taking down like the dead trees from, that have been beetled or have been burned? Is that what's going on? But these aren't live trees?
This, we're not taking any trees down under this program right now. This was for the development of the plan.
Okay. Is this the FEMA one that we were talking about?
No.
No? Okay, then this wasn't the one I wanted to have pulled, it was the one that she wouldn't have pulled, so thank you.
Any public comment on this item? Come on up.
I think it's really important, the supervisors and the people who are going to be consulting, that the public be included. I had people going to cut down my trees, and one man said he was an arborist, and the next day he said, well, he wasn't quite an arborist. I think the community needs to know what rules apply, not just the engineers. And I think there should be more public daytime meetings where old people like me can come and learn. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have something to add?
Stephen Carter, Assistant County Minister of Officer. Just for clarification for the public since what has been stated so far, this was just a contract for, to help us apply for grants for both a CalOES grant and a USDA grant. So this was just grant application consulting services, not anything to do with the trees themselves at this point.
Supervisor Sabatier? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to close public input now. We don't have anyone in Zoom room, right? Okay, yeah. Supervisor Sabatier?
Just based on the comment that we heard, just a quick question, since they're kind of putting a plan together to know what grant funds to go after, will we be seeing that plan when that plan is completed? Or when we go after grants, will we see those grant applications? Just to get, again, make it as open and transparent as possible, so we're all aware of what the plan is?
So these are two specific grants that we are going after, and if that grant happens, it would be brought back to your board, yes?
That was my question. Thank you very much.
Okay, action.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve amendment number two to agreement between the County of Lake and Mountain G Engineering, Inc., for consulting services for development of Lake County Hazard Tree Removal Project in the amount of $42,000 and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 5.5, agreement between the County of Lake and Motherwise for the Perinatal Mood and Anxiety Disorders Program in the amount of $125,000 for fiscal years 2023 to '26 and authorize the board chair to sign. Pulled by Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you very much. So I have two things for this one. One is a fix that I would like to make, but at the same time, I cannot get myself to approve this without either an appropriate waiving of the bidding. But in my opinion, we need to go out and do an RFP. In my research, we have been waiving the bidding for this since 2019. And we, at one point, need to really go through that process rather than continuing to work with the exact same agency without going through the proper steps. But the change that I believe is needed is, right now, there's only a budget for '23, '24. This is, it says in the amount of $125,000 for fiscal years, but it's for each fiscal year. And so I would like to change Exhibit A to state that it's $125,000 for '23, '24, '24, '25, and '25, '26. There's the potential for an amendment if that ever changes, but at least if it stays the same, then no amendment will have to come to the Board of Supervisors, because at this moment in time, it's going to be forced to come to the Board of Supervisors. And I had the wrong exhibit. It looks like it's actually under payment terms of Exhibit B, number four, where it would say, county shall remit payment to contractor on a monthly basis at the monthly rate of $10,416.67 for fiscal year, and then we can list 2023, '24, '24, '25, '25, '26.
Director Jones?
Yes, and would that also, is your suggestion also to amend, I don't have the contract in front of me, but the, on the first page where it says the total, the contract maximum should be, are you suggesting to increase that by all three years as well?
Or else you would be stuck.
It's true. It's true.
I didn't catch that one, so thank you for catching that.
So that would be then to amend, sorry, I'm doing math.
It's the compensation section.
It would be $375,000. Is that also your?
I would concur that that only makes perfect sense.
Thank you. Does that make sense? So the changes you're asking is a change to the contract maximum to reflect the full three years of funding for $375,000 as well as to, I think that's actually it, because all of the funding is broken out in Exhibit B. It's just the contract maximum that doesn't reflect that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Any comments from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
And again, I will not be voting on this, as I believe it needs to go through an RFP process. I just wanted to provide some other changes that I feel are needed if this moves forward.
I'm going to make a motion. I'd like to move to approve agreement between County of Lake and Motherwise for their perinatal mood and anxiety disorders program in the amount of $375,000 for fiscal years '23 through '26 and authorize the board chair to sign.
With amendment.
Oh, I forgot the other amendments. Sorry, Paul.
So as amended?
As amended. Thank you. Second. I just said the number.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. 5.9, continue continuation of proclamation in the existence of a local tree emergency due to pervasive tree mortality. You pulled the item?
Joan Moss. Again, I would like to comment that I don't know how many public hearings were held about this. I heard you, Jessica, tell me, tell me here in this courtroom, or this room, there's going to be $4,000 a tree. I know some Girl Scouts in Kelseyville that were heartbroken when one of their trees was cut down, was blowed down in a storm, and they took seeds. They went and gathered seeds, and they grew them, and they planted them back on Cobb Mountain. That's the kind of participation that I would hope from a grant like this. If a tree is dead, fine. Have a policy. I've been wanting to say this for quite a long time. I want you to develop a policy where the public participates in the process. And I believe that it's missing. All I see is a proclamation, and I don't know what it means, and I don't know how the public is going to be involved. I think for every tree that comes down, there should be another one planted, and that should be part of your program. Thank you for letting me finally say it. I'll write it up, give it to you. Thank you.
Yeah, so we've heard these comments from you, Joan, before. Appreciate them. This is the emergency that we have to declare so that we can go after funding to help remove dead trees. If you want to start a program to plant trees, or if anyone in the community wants to do that, if you want to spearhead that, that is more than welcome. That is not going to be something that the county does, because this is just the emergency, which is what we need to go after funding, to create programs. That's what this is. This is stating that we have an emergency. This is telling the state we have an emergency, so we can request funding from the state.
I would like public hearings about the emergency so that the public understands.
Yeah, so we did have--
Public hearing during the day.
We, we had a hearing right here in our board chambers in May of 2022, when we adopted this emergency.
And I believe we had an update on the tree mortality status, since we got a new map as well, correct?
I would like every meeting about this to be public, and I'd like the public in order to come. Thank you.
So every time the board is going to talk about this, it's going to be in the board chambers. This is the public meeting.
More involved. Thank you. That's what I'm saying. I want the public more involved in this decision. Thank you.
Elaine Brown, educator. I think part of what we're concerned with is the money, the $4,000. What's going to happen with that in order to replace dead trees? I'm new to the area. I see the devastation. It must kill people that live in Cobb in this area. Can we get students, senior projects, paid to pay, go back there and replant Douglas firs that don't get eaten so badly by beetles? Thank you.
Again, this doesn't have anything to do with the tree removal programs or the grants that we're going after. This is simply the emergency that is needed to proceed to try and find funding, to apply for funding, to build programs. If anyone wants to work with private landowners and do tree projects, you're more than welcome. I would encourage you to spearhead those efforts. This is the emergency declaration, and it is nothing more than that. Is there any other comments from the board? I'll open it up for the public. Anyone in the chambers, in the Zoom room? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve continuation of proclamation of the existence of a local emergency due to pervasive tree mortality.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. 5.14 is our next item. Adopt resolution amending resolution number 2023-117 and the position allocation chart for fiscal year 2023 to 2024, establishing position and allocation for fiscal year 2023, 2024, budget unit 2020, I'm sorry, 2201, and sheriff, coroner, and budget unit 2301, sheriff jail facilities, and approving compensation adjustments for classifications in the deputy sheriff class series, public safety dispatcher class series, and deputy sheriff corrections class series. This was pulled by Supervisor Sabatier, but is this the one that you wanted to recess before?
Too late.
Well, we can.
It's all good.
Okay. Sorry.
So I pulled this because, to me, this is not the appropriate process. A very, a proposition was made during our budget, no conversation was had. In fact, it's a good reason to not have a conversation, so that we don't negotiate in public. Something was brought to the unions, and nothing was brought back to the board, other than what's on the consent agenda. And I feel that I am not allowed to speak on this item, because that would be negotiating in public. And I would love to see this go to closed session, so we can, there are some missing pieces within the memo, in my opinion. The memo is very simple. It doesn't provide any financial to show how we went from where we were to where we are. It doesn't share percentages of increases, other than if you go back to the presentation. But I do not believe the board made an acceptance of the exact details. The board gave acceptance for moving forward with providing a proposal and coming back. In my opinion, we need to go into closed session, discuss this, and then come back out. But discussing it in public would be negotiating in public, and I am not comfortable with that. If we move forward today, I will abstain from making a vote, as I would love to have further discussions in the correct forum, which would be closed session.
Sheriff Hal?
Well, the whole process is obviously new to me as well, so I'm not exactly sure what the best format is, but I'm certainly not opposed to closed session or answering any, any questions the board might have. Obviously, HR has helped out with the, with-- any, any questions the board might have. Obviously, HR has helped out with the, with the agenda item and maybe Ms. Sanderson can answer any questions you have about that, but.
Do you have anything to add, Pam?
Yes, we did do a meet and confer and send this information out to the unions who accepted the terms of the increase. I felt that we had instructions to go forth and do a meet and confer, which is what we've done. So beyond that, we're just trying to move forward the increases proposed by the sheriff's department, and, and the union is in agreement with all the raises presented in the meet and confer process.
Supervisor Green?
Just to be specific, so we can specifically address the concerns raised.
The microphone.
Oh, no, it's on.
It's on. So if there was implied or express direction to do that meet and confer, when did we, when did we as a board give that?
It was my last paragraph of what I requested in, in my presentation to the board.
It was during our budget hearing.
Thank you. And can I counsel have anything to add?
Is that the Ron Act does give your board the option to hold closed sessions with regards to this item if your board wishes to do so. That is an option for your board.
Vice Sheriff Simon?
Yeah, you know, at least when I gave my consent, it was to move forward with, you know, finalizing and getting it, um, complete support as long as the steps were taken that needed to be taken. That was, that was my consent when it was brought. Obviously, public safety being one of the most important things that we deal with here at the board level. I thought it was a out-of-the-box idea that brought it to address some real needs in the sheriff's department. So when I gave my consent, it was to help us move forward with this process. So I just wanted to clarify that for my, my consent.
Yes, I'm, I'm actually fine with moving forward with this as it is. However, I do agree we could talk about more in closed session. So I'm, I'm not against what's proposed. I just, I'm, I'm fine with talking more about it so that that way there can be more discussion as stated by Supervisor Sabatier.
So my, my opinion is there was no discussion last time other than yes, let's move forward, but we didn't, the board did not provide assistance in what the confines of your conversations were. And again, negotiating in public is an uncomfortable space, which is why law allows us to negotiate whether for property or for salaries in closed session. I have many questions that I can't get answers in public at this moment in time that will never lead to a, a different outcome potentially for what is being proposed. It feels strange to say, let's move forward, but then let's talk about it rather than, in my opinion, the board of supervisors have been taken out of the negotiation portion of this. We want what's best for the community, not what's just put in front of the table, and we have, we did not discuss it last time because it wasn't a large discussion other than we support you. We want you to have the ability to fill those positions. But to me, we've never spoken about details, and today we're going to slide right over those details and, and not, again, have a deep dive discussion. This is an important discussion to have, and I just feel that the process that we have taken has short-sighted us out or has stifled the board of supervisors to being able to be a partner in creating the right solution rather than just taking the solution.
Yeah, I think in a little bit of an unusual situation from the start. My intention was to approach this as a bit of an emergency, and that's why I did it at that time. And I thought we covered it a little bit, but certainly covered it here. My intention is obviously to, to continue. The board has always been supportive of law enforcement. I believe that said, I've said that plenty of times, and I believe that, and I don't think there'll be any hindrance to us moving forward and having discussions. Of course, I'm happy to have those at any given time.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Come on up.
Joan Moss. I agree with Bruno. I believe the supervisors should know it backwards and forwards and upside down so that when there are lawsuits, the supervisors say, well, we didn't deal with it. I believe that law enforcement is extremely important. I understand the sheriff is short of staff, and I think that's why he needs the input of all of you. So you can say, yes, but what if this happens? What if that happens? This is not a county that's a rubber stamp. Mr. Carter is here to, to give input on anything financial. He's very responsible. I think the supervisors should be responsible and know what they are passing. So when the lawsuits come, you say, well, we talked about it, but we didn't come to any conclusion. I know I don't understand the, all the ramifications, but I know that Bruno has the county in his heart. He doesn't want trouble. And that's why Bruno is saying, I'm not voting for this because we didn't go into detail and we didn't have enough discussion. I think that's very important.
Elaine Brown, educator. Last week, I went by the sheriff's department and stopped to go up and ask them, are they okay? Because there's like 10 cars out in front in the parking lot not being used that were, must have been purchased at one time for use. So I was concerned. It was at lunchtime. The office was closed during lunchtime. I'm from another area. I've never experienced places like that closed at lunchtime, so there must be an extreme shortage. Thank you.
Okay, so I don't think that taking the time to take this into closed session is going to prevent lawsuits. But I, I do think that we have some strong feelings here, and maybe it's appropriate for us to bring this back next week in closed session.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm going to try to use the sheriff's comments to see if we can do something. He stated emergency. I don't know if staffing emergency fits, but can we add an extra item and have an extra closed session item due to the emergency of needing this to be done? I know there's a timeline that they're looking at, which is to get this to the auditor controller so that they can get the changes done within a certain date. Just, I'm trying to figure out how to not slow this down so we can have a more in-depth conversation. And I believe it's kind of up to the board if they agree to that reasoning, that if we wait till next week, then we will not be able to meet the deadline. That was, everyone hoped that we would meet in order to get this in front of the auditor controllers, and that the need for the closed session wa, came up after the posting of the agenda. Therefore, there could be a need for an extra item.
And for extra items under the Brown Act, there is an emergency component to it. In addition to that, there has to be a justification that the emergency aspect of it came up after the posting of the agenda. So there has to be a demonstration of that. In this case, it would be the emergency aspect of it would have come up after the, the posting of today's agenda in order for it to be taken as an extra item for, for today. The other option for your board is to take it up at, at a special meeting, which would shorten the turnaround time. It all goes to the emergency, urgency aspect of it and the, and the timing of that in order for it to be taken up as an extra item today.
I tried.
Well, what if we approved it today and then brought it back next week? And if we had to make any adjustments next week, we could move forward with those?
There is an option for your board to amend the resolution. That is one option to, to Supervisor Sabatier's point. The resolution that's being proposed, if, if adopted, would set these, these amounts and these position allocations, and whether or not that may play a role under the scenario if, say, closed session discussions were to take place afterwards. That may have an effect on that, on, on that aspect of it. So, but, but resolutions can be amended. There's a number of options that your board can take since the government's code section dealing with this particular item as a potential closed session item does, is permissive to your board as far as whether or not to hold closed session hour, the item, this type of closed session item. Your board may hold closed session items dealing with salary, salary schedules, or compensations of, of county employees. So by it being permissive, it may be, maybe discussed in open session, which may have its pros and cons, or in closed session.
Supervisor Crandall?
That's a far reach, but in regards to emergency, I can attest that there are numerous break-ins and numerous, there's numerous criminal activity that I've been getting a lot of calls about, emails. I'm pretty sure you can prove that with some of the calls and the dispatch and whatnot. Because like, like, just one example, the fire, the firehouse being broken into and vehicles being stolen, things like that. I think it's, to me, it's an emergency because that keeps happening, and more of the folks that are doing this are emboldened to do it even more because of the lack of, of law enforcement that's able to be on the streets. That's a far reach, but I'm just throwing it out there. I know others are getting those calls too. I'm not trying to say mine is the only one, so I just want to make sure.
Madam Chair, may I ask the sheriff a question? When did you become aware, or Pam, when did you become aware of the deadline by the auditor's office? Was it after the posting last week or before?
Yes, we were trying to get it in so that it'll impact the December 1st check.
When were you, when were you notified of the deadline? Was it after posting or before?
Well, the deadline always exists on the 21st because the payroll cycle starts over again, so I've been aware of the deadlines for three years.
So it's a standing deadline?
Yes.
Not a new deadline?
Correct.
Supervisor Green?
And what is the deadline? I'm sorry.
The new payroll cycle starts over again on the 21st, so if this is going to affect the December 1st check, then
Okay.
this needs to be approved.
All right, thank you. Nothing of what I've heard here today constitutes anything close to an emergency, so I'm opposed to declaring that. I'm also opposed to signing off on this and then doing some post-dated review of it in closed session. If we're going to hold to the process, and I think that's what Supervisor Sabatier is asking us to do, the simplest thing to do would be bring it back on the 24th as a closed session item. No, we would probably not make that December check deadline, but we would check all the checkboxes in our process, ensure that we answer all the questions that we may have about the meet and confer process, and we would go ahead and approve the recommended action at that time. So I think there's consensus that we bring it back to a closed session.
I, I'm not sure there is. Pam, go ahead.
So I guess I'm a little confused because I thought the direction was to move forward with a meet and confer with the numbers that the sheriff gave us, which is what we've done, and all of the groups agreed to it, but now we're saying we haven't met the process, but.
Well, we did give that direction.
Okay.
And I agree with Vice Sheriff Simon on that. It just seems that there is some more possible negotiations that Supervisor Simon, or Sabatier would like to talk about, but I don't want to hold up these raises either. They're critical. I'm okay with passing this and then moving on with closed session so that we can have those conversations without impacting these raises.
I think it's important enough that we do this correctly, that we don't look at next week because I don't want to wait till December for, till after December 1st for the effect. I, I'm willing to say let's do a closed session special meeting, either Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, and we can make that happen. I, I just, in no way, shape, or form did questions come out about different options during the conversation of the, during the budget. In a sense, good, because we're not supposed to negotiate in public and start throwing out things. That's what closed session is for. And in no way, shape, or form am I allowed, in my opinion, to share other options or other opportunities right now because, again, I would be negotiating in public, and that is the reason that there is closed session for looking at salary increases, and it's not just a go and conquer and we accept what it is. In my opinion, what I saw was, we are interested in the proposal, and let's review the proposal when it's been discussed after the fact with the union. This is not a chance for us to review because this is open session. This is a chance to pass or not pass. And I want to pass something, and I would say special meeting is where I would stand, that that's important enough that we make the time to make this happen. But I feel that the process has left the board of supervisors' voice vacant.
Once again, I'll make the comment. You, you know, if there are questions or something that need to be happened, or at least a little more understanding, because I did understand what the, what the sheriff was bringing to us. You know, like I said, for me, I knew that this would be coming back sooner than later. There was a little bit of conversation of trying to meet, move this thing forward before the end of the year. So, you know, myself, I'm prepared to move forward with what's in front of us today. But, you know, I would need three to do that. So at the end of the discussion, I, I still plan on making a motion. If it's not seconded, we'll go from there.
Okay, are we ready for action then?
Is that why we're up?
I think so.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to offer the resolution.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I abstain.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
No.
And Supervisor Piesgaff?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
And can we, can we go to closed session?
Want to bring this back in closed session and talk it out?
So we can talk more about the other, the other concerns, but, but with today, you know, we have, we can move forward.
Next week? Put it on next week? Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to take up the other sheriff's item?
I'm up here for another one.
Oh, yes. That was 14.
5.18, I think.
Yeah, 5.18.
Okay, 5.18, approve amendment between the County of Lake and Keefe Group for the fiscal year 2023-24 with no change from the original and authorize the chairperson to sign, pulled by Supervisor Sabatier.
Yes, I don't know if I'm correct or not, so I'm going to ask the sheriff here. The original commission was 42%. Here in the paperwork that's submitted to us, which I believe supersedes the previous exhibit, so now it's the new exhibit, says 31%, but within the original contract, under item number five, it says customer will be paid commission for the service to be provided under this agreement equal to 42%.
Yes.
And I'm thinking we need to change that within the main contract as well, so not just amending what's being asked for us to amend, but amending number five to match Exhibit B, I believe, to be 31%.
Actually, the commission is 42%. The 31% reference would have only been if we agreed to have Keefe handle commissary orders and distribution on-site. So that's a little confusion there. So ours, we didn't choose that option. So we're remaining with the exact same as what the contract was. I know you had some other questions about the, the one-year kicker is kind of being unlimited. Our intent is to go out to RFP in the next year, and we needed the two one-year extensions simply to accomplish that and to negotiate a new contract.
Okay. I, I needed to get a response to my question, and I did, so I'm good to go.
Well, you mentioned you were looking for an email. That would have been from me. I composed one last night, and you weren't in my reply all, so you have it now, but thank you.
All right, public comment? Anyone in Zoom? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the amendment between the County of Lake and Keefe Group for fiscal year 2023-24 with no change from the original and authorize the chairperson to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Sheriff. Okay, our last pulled item is 515.
Yes, Director French is on his way.
Okay, I'll just start reading it as he runs down the stairs.
Hopefully we don't hear some bad news.
5.15, waive the formal bidding requirement and authorize the IT director to issue purchase order for three servers to Dell Marketing LP. This is, this item is sponsored by Information Technology, pulled by Supervisor Sabatier, and we'll just pause for the door to open.
Poor guy, we're all looking at the door.
Just for your information, Board, he was in a previous meeting, so...
This is actually a really simple fix.
Okay.
It only says waive the bidding, it doesn't provide a reason for waiving the bidding, and we need to provide a reason.
Up, up, up. There he is. Welcome, Director French.
Is this the part where I say something?
Well, first Supervisor Sabatier is going to bring up his comment, yeah.
So just looking to give a reason for why we are waiving the bidding that was lacking from the motion, that's why I wanted to pull it out of the consent agenda, but this is a piggyback, and so the provision code would be section 2-38.4. We are using a state contract with Dell, and we are piggybacking on that state contract, and so I wanted to just waive the bidding with that specific reason rather than just vague.
Yeah, apologize for the vagueness. The issue with this one is, in addition to the contract, they're also actually giving us a further discount off the contract price. I just wanted to mention that in there, so apologize for the confusing wording in there.
No apologies needed.
Any member, any public input on this?
Hello, Casey Moreno, Deputy County Administrative Officer. I just want to let your board know that we are working on the RFP policy, which we plan to bring on December 5th, as well as a revision to the purchasing ordinance.
Wonderful, thank you so much, Casey. Any other comments? Anyone in Zoom? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process due to piggybacking on state contract under code section 2-38.4, and approve and authorize the IT director to issue purchase order for three servers to Dell Marketing LP.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Okay, I know we have a 10:15 item, but let's take a short break and come back at 10:20, and then we will proceed. 6.5, 10:15 a.m. item, presentation of the Clear Lake Integrated Preparedness and Resilience Plan for Dresneid, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Muscle Management, a Rapid Response and Transition to Containment Plan brought to us by Water Resources, and we have Angela De Palma Dow.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board, Scott De Leone, I am also here on Zoom.
Didn't see you there, sorry.
And my role this morning is simply to introduce Angela, and she, Angela De Palma Dow is our Invasive Species Program Coordinator. She was the lead on this particular project, and I will be turning it over to her and our consultants to be making the presentation today on this very important plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Angela, thank you.
Thank you for that introduction, and thank you, Chair. First, we're going to start off with a video. This is about a five-minute PSA, Public Service Announcement, that we made last year as part of a state grant deliverable, and it provides a little background of the current quagga muscle, invasive muscle prevention program that we have here on Clear Lake. So Jake will go ahead and run that video, and then we'll take up the rest of the presentation after, thank you.
Welcome to Lake County, home of California's largest natural freshwater lake, Clear Lake.
Originally called Hobbiton, meaning big water, in native Pomona, Clear Lake is one of the oldest lakes in North America.
Clear Lake has over 120 miles of shoreline with shallow and rich waters that makes it a world-class fishing destination.
The productive waters of Clear Lake have produced record-catching fish, which contributes to the average 15,000 boaters that visit Clear Lake every year.
Clear Lake is currently free of invasive quagga and zebra mussels.
Monthly monitoring by Lake County's Water Resources staff help to maintain Clear Lake's muscle-free status.
If invasive quagga or zebra mussels are introduced into Clear Lake, their devastating impacts will last forever.
Mussels consume massive amounts of green algae when they filter-feed lake water.
Which will decimate the sport fishing population as green algae is the base of the food web in Clear Lake. Mussels can attach to and clog drinking water pipes.
Causing millions of dollars to the public and private sector to pay for needed maintenance and removal.
For the drinking water systems on the lake, this is especially concerning as Clear Lake provides drinking water to about 66% of the county's population.
Added cost to remove mussels would make drinking water treatment more difficult and expensive.
There are no examples of successful eradication of invasive mussels from lakes, meaning if quagga or zebra mussels are introduced into Clear Lake...
They will be here forever, and the Clear Lake as we know it today will never be the same again.
There are three simple things we can do to prevent the introduction of invasive mussels.
Before leaving any water body, remember to clean your boat inside and out, and all compartments, remove any plants, dirt, or sand.
Drain your engine, pull your drain plug, and empty any water from ballast tanks or live wells.
Dry your boat, including inside compartments, and make sure all equipment, including water toys and fishing gear, are completely dry before visiting another water body. Every boat launching in Lake County needs to be screened and stickered.
Find participating screeners and sticker sellers online at www.nomussels.com.
When visiting a sticker seller, the boater will fill out a single-page screener form. The screener will verify that the boat is safe to launch in Lake County...
And does not have mussels or has not recently been in a mussel-infested lake.
If a boat is high-risk or likely to have mussels, an inspection is needed, and the vendor will call a certified watercraft inspector from the county...
And they will perform an inspection on the boat for free.
Once a boat passes screening and/or inspection, boaters will purchase a sticker for $20.
The County of Lake Quagga Mussel stickers are located next to the yearly California State sticker, which will be adhered to both sides of the bow, next to the registration numbers, and the state's mussel fee sticker, as well as at the back of the trailer. Please report any violators without current quagga mussel stickers.
Even screened boats will sometimes be stopped at the ramps by ramp monitors for quality assurance.
Sometimes, mussel-sniffing dogs will also be present at the ramps to conduct impromptu inspections.
This step won't take long, but it's important so that we can continue to protect Clear Lake from invasive mussels.
If you have any other questions, or you think you see a quagga or zebra mussel in Clear Lake, or in another water body in Lake County...
You can call us at waterresources@707-263-2344.
You can send us an email at water/resources@lakecountyca.gov.
Or you can send us a message on Facebook. Find us @LakeCountyWater.
Thanks for helping us keep Clear Lake clear of invasive mussels.
And with your help, we can protect and preserve Clear Lake for future generations of people, plants, and animals.
Thanks to our funding partners at the California State Parks Division of Boating and Waterways for supporting this program and PSA.
Thank you, Jake, and I believe we have a presentation for a screen share. Great, thank you so much. So the rest of the presentation today, we're going to talk about Muscle Introduction Prevention and Response Plan. We showed you a little bit about the current program, and now we're going to talk about some of our plans for the unfortunate event in case we do get an introduction of mussels into Clear Lake. And I really want to give props to our funders. We got this project funded by Grant from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and then today I have Corey, my technician, he's upstairs running the presentation, and he is vital to this program, boots on the ground. And then our consultants today, Lisa De Bruckeir, De Bruckeir, and Leah Elwell from Creative Resource Strategies and Conservation Collaborations are consultants, and they'll be presenting with me today. And a little bit outline, next slide, please. Okay, outline, we already a little bit, showed a little bit about the intro to the program. I have a few more slides on that. We'll briefly describe how we developed the plan, and then the consultants will talk about the plan, and we'll have some next steps, and then we'll be available for questions and answer. And I'd also like to say that if anybody has any questions or is interested more in-depth about our prevention program, we did come to the board in March of 2021 and gave like about a 30-minute presentation that went into detail about the program works. That's available on the Lake County YouTube channel, just look for that date. So this is what we're preventing. Imagine during the drought years, some of the water recedes in Clear Lake, and we have a bunch of shoreline exposed with sharp shells of zebra or quagga mussels. There's, of course, lots of other impacts that zebra quagga mussels could cause to the lake, but unless we want our lake to look like this, we really want to both prevent and plan for a response for managing an introduction. And this is a close-up of what these mussels look like, so this photo makes them look really big, but they're actually very small, and you can see that the quagga mussel on the left and the zebra mussel on the right are very similar-looking, and we usually refer to them, acronym is QZ. So if I go into, if I say QZ, I'm referring to quagga and zebra mussels. And you can see that they can colonize both sessile objects such as this boat prop, as well as living things like other native mussels or native clams, and organisms like this crayfish here. So a big shout-out and thanks, of course, this program, this prevention program that we have right now only works because we have such a rock star team of ramp monitors. I have them all listed here by name, and here's some snapshots of them out there doing their job, and a lot of times they're the first face that somebody sees when they come out of town, out of state to our lake. They stop at the ramps, they want to get their boat in, and they see a ramp monitor. That ramp monitor provides them education outreach, tells them where the best places are to go eat, you know, maybe some secret fishing spots, maybe some conversation about that, but really they're there to ask them about their boat and making sure that they're safe to launch. So I appreciate them every day, all the time, they are the best part about the program that we have right now. So thank you to all the ramp monitors here. So as you saw from the video, there is a need for a plan to respond and to plan for in case we get an introduction of QZ mussels in Clear Lake. You know, in the video, we talked about there's about 15,000 average boaters that come to visit our county for aquatic activities, and that's high risk, that's high potential for an introduction. So we really need to have a plan in place in case we are to get a detection or an introduction. And this is both important for the ecological aspects of the lake, but also for the economic. So Lake County relies on more than a million annual fishing dollars, just for fishing-related, so that doesn't take into account all the other tourism around the lake or other lake activities, and that's $20.16, so that's probably been elevated since then. In general, the economic toll of invasive species and quagga mussel management is, is pretty large. Next slide, please. So this is just to give you overview of that. Economic costs of invasive quagga mussel management or mitigation at the national level has been between 120, 130 billion annually in the Great Lakes Basin, so bringing it down to freshwater systems, about 30 million annual cost just for mussel monitoring and control, and then in California for drinking water damages, they're looking at about 30 billion for those costs. And these are kind of outdated numbers, so I'd say between 2008, 2012, so that's even more in today's dollars. And again, the need for a response plan and the need for continued efforts for a prevention plan is really demonstrated by the boat visitors that come to Clear Lake. So what this map here is showing is the boaters that come to Clear Lake where they were last. So what water body were they visiting, or was their boat in before they came to Clear Lake? And we have the data shown here for the zip codes for those locations from 2018, 2019, 2020, 21, 22, and this is really important when you see the overlap of the current quagga mussel and zebra mussel distribution. So you guys can see where those quagga and zebra mussels are detected across the United States, and there's direct overlap from where boaters are visiting before they come to our water body. And then to bring it closer to home here in California, even in the state of California, in Southern California, there are water bodies that have quagga mussels currently. And there is, the closest reservoir is San Justo Reservoir that's in central California, and that has zebra mussels, that's the closest located to us, but that reservoir is completely closed off. There is no traffic, boating traffic in and out of that reservoir, it's not used, so those zebra mussels stay contained, and that was a direct impact on the local economy that depended on that reservoir for aquatic, economic aquatic industries. And then here's an example that's happening recently. In Idaho, the Snake River has recent detections of quagga mussel villagers, so those are the juveniles. They're detected in the open water, so they don't sit on anything, they're in the open water, and through regular monitoring efforts, they discovered villagers. And so there's a section of the Snake River around where that star is indicated on the map that is under a closure, immediate closure. So the Department of Fish and Wildlife there in Idaho has prevented any fishing access, hunting, trapping, there is no way to get close to that river at all in that section that's been closed since they found those villagers. And this is pretty scary because villagers can be found in a little amount of water that's cool and dark, and that could be lots of spaces on boats or equipment, and we do know that a lot of boats travel from Idaho here to California into Clear Lake. Also, the Snake River Basin, if you guys see on the map, the breadth and range of that basin is pretty wide, it eventually drains into the Columbia River Basin, and it touches all the states, and Utah, Wyoming, Nevada, Washington, and our neighbors in Oregon and Nevada. And they're currently doing treatments in that section of Snake River. They're not going to be able to determine if they've worked or not until spring, when those villagers are viable, that's the season for the reproduction. So close-to-home example, they're going through right now a response that we want to prevent and plan for, and that's part of the presentation purpose today. So I'm going to do a brief plan development talk before I turn it over to the consultants, and again, really want to thank Grant from Fish and Wildlife Service for developing this, and our two consultants here. So this was a very collaborative process. We had participating agencies, next slide, please, there you go, thanks. We had collaborative agencies, particularly from Fish and Wildlife, the states, and they participated in most of our meetings and our outreach events, and then we also had a wide breadth of partners that were invited and participation. There were several Lake County tribes that participated in the development of this plan, Clear Lake Water Purveyors, as well as some regional water districts, so those downstream that would receive water, work with water from Clear Lake or neighboring watersheds, so from Yolo County, Sonoma Water, Solano Water District, and then the city of Lakeport. We also recruited a lot of public input for this plan development. There was two virtual public and partner town halls, and in these town halls, we gathered information, we gathered concerns, feedback, we really wanted to make sure that we incorporated the needs of these participants into the plan development. So we had a webinar on February 2nd, and this was during the day, and this was more targeted for agencies, tribes, partners, and then we had a water quality Wednesday, and this was February 22nd, and this was in the evening to get anybody that couldn't attend the day webinar. It was really important for us to get public inclusion, we found, not just for the development of the plan, but it also helped us put together the strategies that we needed when we wanted to communicate to the public in the event if we get an introduction. So what kind of worked, what didn't, and what that interaction was like. I will say that both of these presentations are recorded, they're on our website for this program, and the Water Quality Wednesdays are always on our YouTube channel. We also did something which was really exciting, actually kind of difficult for me as the invasive species program coordinator, but we did a real-life response exercise. So this was in June, and it was a couple days, and we literally set up scenarios for what happens if a mussel is introduced into the lake. So here's this cove, and a villager detection happened yesterday, and what do we do? yesterday. And what do we do? Who do we notify? What's the next steps? So we worked through some of those scenarios, and it really helped troubleshoot, and then get a specific information and the questions we needed to include in our plan. And who do we talk to, and who do we need to include in these decisions? We really want to thank the participating partners of that exercise. So they're all listed here. And without their contribution and participation, it would not have been successful, and we would not have garnered the information that we needed. So really, thanks to all of those listed there. And then all the information from that exercise, thank you to the consultants, Lisa and Leah, for putting together this after-action report, which is on our website, which chronicled everything that occurred during that exercise. So I'm talking about a lot of links and resources and things we did. And so if you need to find information, any of you at home on the Zoom can do a screenshot of this. But here's all the links of where you can find information on this program and the efforts we've done for both prevention, the current program, and planning for introduction. We have social media page at Facebook, we have a YouTube channel. And then if you want general information about the state's effort for quagga and zebra mussels, the CDFW, or California Department of Fish and Wildlife page, is really good. You can always come and talk to me in the third floor in the courthouse, or call me. I love to talk invasives, and I can talk about this program if you have any questions. So we're going to jump in, present the plan now. I did provide hard copies of this plan to the board and admin on October 3rd, to give you guys lots of time to read and take notes and get any questions that you had. And then this plan has also been online since August on our www.clearlakemuscleprevention.org website. That website was put together for this plan development, for all those resources to be in one place. And there was an embedded form on that website for anybody that just had questions or comments could easily submit that information and didn't have to go through a long comment process. And if the public, if anybody's interested in reviewing this draft plan, we have a hard copy upstairs, available for rent, checkout. And if you'd like a copy for yourself, we can give that to you for a small printing fee. And with that, I'll turn it over to consultants, and we will talk about the plan.
All right. Thanks so much, Angela. I'm Lisa DeBruckeir with Creative Resource Strategies. This is Leah Elwell with Conservation Collaborations. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today, and we've enjoyed working with county staff and its numerous partners throughout the past year to put this important plan together. Leah and I have worked with the Western states and Canadian provinces for over the past decade, dealing with dracenid introductions, planning for them, doing rapid response exercises, and making sure that entities, whether it's a county, or a state, or a region, have the tools available and the understanding of what it would take to respond to an introduction of quagga or zebra mussels. So we really appreciated the opportunity to come back here. I was actually here six or seven years ago assisting with some watercraft reciprocity programs with Berriessa, Solano, Castaic, and some of the other local water bodies. So we're pretty familiar with the area, and definitely very familiar with the lake. So next slide. And the next one. So really, the purpose of this plan is to make sure that Lake County knows what it needs to have in place should it ever get an introduction of dracenids. And equally important, is there anything the county can do now to enhance its prevention efforts so that it doesn't get an introduction? And so we looked at this project through both of those lenses. And the plan provides guidance to Lake County, as well as the numerous partners that would be involved in an eventual response. Next slide. Angela describes some of the potential effects from an invasive mussel invasion, and it just cannot be overstated. These mussels are ecosystem engineers. They go into a water body, they completely disrupt all of the ecosystem processes that are in place. They have devastating effects on fish populations, in particular sport fish populations. They cause incredible financial impacts to tourism when they invade a lake. And we've demonstrated anywhere from $3 to $20 million in local tourism reduction costs as a result of aquatic invasive species entering water bodies. There'll be real visual effects from these, because when you have drought, or you have lower water levels in the lake, you'll be able to see the exposed razor-sharp edges of the shells. And there are real pain for boaters, boat dock owners. The county's going to have some issues with managing any of its infrastructure associated with the lake. But one of the biggest problems, and one of the most costly, is going to be dealing with water delivery, and what you're going to have to do to your water systems, your infrastructure systems. And that includes not only Lake County and the population that it provides water to, but all of the self-supplied water users that are going to have to purchase equipment and infrastructure to manage the water that they're pumping out of wells. So it's a wide-ranging problem, and we've included a lot of the cost estimates in those types of things in the plan itself. Next slide. We did build this website. Angela mentioned it. And we wanted to create a clear, transparent process with the public as we move through the development of the plan. So every time we did something as part of the project, or created a new piece of the plan, we always posted it to the website. And as Angela mentioned, the plan has been up there since August, the draft plan since August of '23. Next slide. So the plan itself contains a lot of background information. We really wanted to help everybody understand what the legal and statutory authorities are of the agencies and entities that would be involved in an eventual response. As Leah and I have worked with the Western states, when we go into an area and start working with teams of people, the realization happens quickly that a lot of entities really don't understand who's on first, where do the financial resources come from, how does the response play out, all those types of things. So that's what this plan does, is really describe those. It also describes the importance of communication in how the public gets notified, how partners get notified, how you would get notified in the process. And then a key piece of the plan is, once a response takes place, how you transition that to containment. And so it's going to be really important, if Clear Lake gets mussels, and they are unable to eradicate them, that there is a strong containment program in place to protect the rest of California and any other water bodies in the West that do not currently have quagga or zebra mussels. And then we think one of the biggest pieces of the plan are the recommendations that we are making, and I think it was seven thematic areas. And that's what we really want to spend the bulk of our time on, is walking through those seven sets of recommendations. So next slide. And the first one deals with funding. We have found that most entities that have had to respond to an introduction of quagga or zebra mussels, whether it be a small enclosed quarry or water body, or a high-elevation mountain lake, or in the case of Idaho, the Snake River from Twin Falls Dam down to Niagara Falls, excuse me, minimum of $1 to $1.5 million upfront, and upwards of, into the millions and millions to deal with an introduction of these. And that includes the immediate response, as well as long-term containment. So it's important that Lake County think about that. And what we've provided in the plan are some potential sources of revenue that you could use to begin building that fund in preparation for it. It could involve changes to mussel sticker pricing, establishing a mussel sticker for non-motorized, non-resident watercraft. And I know that there's a little bit of angst about non-motorized vessels having a sticker price associated with them. But I want to assure you, in my experience of dealing with other states, although there's some initial resistance to that, once these watercraft owners realize what the funding is going for, that quickly dissipates, and there is strong support for the program. And I can tell you that is true, and definitely in Oregon and in several of the other Western states. And if you need for us to provide you with some of those examples after today, we're happy to do so. There could be potential for a local municipal fee, or a county ordinance that establishes special event fees. You have over 1,000 big bass tournaments that come into Clear Lake every year. And a lot of these folks are used to paying more significant fees in other locations where they have these large bass tournaments. So it would not be outrageous to consider raising that fee for these large tournaments to help support some of these decontamination and inspection efforts. Leah, next slide.
The next category of recommendations that we provided in the document was related to reporting. So it was already mentioned, the self-supplied water users. So this first recommendation is to develop an online reporting system that actually would encompass those self-supplied water users. At this time, it's not clear the number of those, but really having an understanding and creating a database that could be used to not only notify that suite of individuals, but then also just track that information. Next on that reporting would be to really develop and implement a reporting or a monitoring program. So allowing those folks that are continually using water from the lake, they could be eyes on what could be occurring. So kind of that first set of early detection, they may be able to see mussels in their system at an early stage. So that would be one of the key places to, in some ways, a reporting, or sorry, a partnering opportunity. And then finally, increase and diversify the current programmatic monitoring efforts that are ongoing right now, to really just maximize abilities to be on that front line of detection. So next slide.
The next one is capital expenditure recommendations. One thing that's going to be really critical is the establishment of up to four permanent watercraft inspection and decontamination stations in the county and around the perimeter of Clear Lake. That will benefit not only Clear Lake, it will benefit some of the other local water bodies that are around Clear Lake. It's really important to do this as soon as possible, because if you have those in place before you get an introduction, you will lessen the chance of getting an introduction, because you'll have more clean boats that actually launch in the lake. They'll come through choke points around Clear Lake, where as they drive by, they'll be able to pull in. And there's some incredibly new technology and engineered designs now that significantly lessen the time that it takes for somebody to have their boat inspected and decontaminated. They're called dip tanks. And literally, the driver of the boat just moves his boat back into a dip tank while it's on the trailer. The water cleans the system out, and then he just drives off, and that's all there is to it. So those cost about $800,000 apiece. And so we've provided Angela and her staff with the costs for all of these different systems. And we've been working with them on potential locations as well. Additional signage is going to be important, and hopefully Caltrans will be a good partner in this effort, in terms of signage off of I-5 and as they enter into some of the county roads as well. And then making sure that you have all the necessary infrastructure, because when you site one of these watercraft inspection stations, you need to have water, safe lighting, easy ingress and egress, that sort of thing. So we've provided those numbers and estimates to the county. Next slide.
Next set of recommendations are on fishing regulations. So this first one looks at some interesting work that shows that the red-eared sunfish actually like eating and would select mussels. So if they were here, they could be sort of one way of keeping numbers down. So consider revising a fishing regulation. So this would obviously involve California Department of Fish and Wildlife, but to allow a minimum, decrease the daily take of the red-eared sunfish, to kind of enhance that food opportunity for them. So next would be a consideration for habitat enhancements. As I understand, you guys are currently working on shoreline regulations, but that are ordinances, but really enhancing the habitat for more vegetation that would then, you know, positively affect the fisheries would be a strong move.
Next slide. So the second-to-last big bucket is all about collaboration, and we can't overstate that as well. We did our best to bring in as many partners with county staff as we went through this process, because there's a lot of entities not right here around the lake that are going to be affected. Yolo, that gets water from Clear Lake, they're going to be affected. And so we did our best to bring a lot of those entities to the table. But considering periodic preparedness exercises with those entities is important, working with those regional water body managers to look at compiling resources together. You've got some big, heavy federal agencies with big budgets that manage water bodies near Clear Lake. They could be potential partners in the watercraft inspection and decontamination facilities, as well as any other reciprocity programs you might have. And then just working with collaborators to better understand the connection between the values that local citizens place on water use and protecting the lake from invasive species. So there's a lot of collaborative work to be done there. And I think there's a second slide for that. Cory?
So to add to this, particularly when we look at a response, is really understanding what inventory is available to do an adequate response, much like any kind of emergency you can think of. If you don't have the right tools, it really hinders capability to do that. So doing an upfront inventory of what's out there, are there more decontamination units available? How quickly can we get them? Those kinds of inventories would be really helpful. Something as simple as making sure it's very clear, who are those contact information for on-hours of operation and after-hours, because we know people come and go, but making sure that stuff is updated so it's available in a moment's notice. Also important, this is looking at the regional water body managers and making sure that information is up to date as well. So some of these are really straightforward and simple, but you can see just staying on top of them is critical. And then finally, there were discussions in the rapid response exercise about moving forward with media control response, but really digging deep and getting input from stakeholders of what that would look like. So there was complete understanding of what may or may not happen should a chemical response take place.
Next slide. And then the last piece is, we did have the National Sea Grant Law Center, who we've been working with for a number of years on these types of issues. Look at your ordinances, look at the county ordinances. They actually did that six or seven years ago as well, when we looked at reciprocity among the water bodies. And so they made some suggestions, just for you to consider, requiring sticker purchases by non-motorized boat owners, making it mandatory to decontaminate motorized, non-motorized watercraft and sea planes upon exiting an infested water body. That is going to be critical before you ever have an introduction. Another change is ensuring that property owners with access to the lake post any signage that you guys might develop, talking about quagga zebra program requirements, and clearly stating in the ordinance that the primary county authority, the county has the authority and responsibility for enforcing the watercraft inspection stations. That's an important one to get in place as soon as possible as well. And then just some other things, like there are property owners that have short-term or vacation rentals. Encouraging them to include verbiage about AIS as somebody enters their property and looks at anything that they might have in their house rules. So the take-home messages that we'd like to share with you before we leave is that Lake County is going to lose all of its state prevention funding upon confirmation of dracenids. This is perplexing to us. In all of the states that we've worked in, there is an understanding that if one water body gets a dracenid introduction, that the most important thing it can do is to continue funding that water body to contain those dracenids to the water body. If you don't do that, they just spread. And that's how they've spread, literally, across the United States. So we've been working hard with the county to figure out, when the state pulls the plug on funding, how is the county going to be able to respond? Because that $1 million, Angela's got the details on that, it will be in jeopardy. And it's literally once they're detected, too. It's not like there's a 12-month gap. This could also jeopardize the sticker program as well, because then you have all the issues that happen with, you may have to shut down the lake for a time, and all that sort of thing. We're recommending that collaboration be enhanced now with Yolo Water Districts to plan for an introduction and establishment of dracenids. Lake County will play a lead role upon a quagga zebra mussel introduction. The state will be there in some capacity to assist. This is different than all of the other states that we've worked in. In all of the other states we've worked in, the state Fish and Wildlife Agency, or Natural Resource Agency, takes the Resource Agency takes the lead. In Idaho right now, when they got dracinids in the Snake River, Idaho Department of Agriculture was the lead, and is the lead. And they actually implemented a response in less than two weeks. So that's an important thing to think about, and maybe strengthening and better understanding that partnership with CDFW and why it's so different here. And then just ensuring you do the best you can to leverage resources and partnerships with all of these neighboring water bodies. We got a lot of great cooperation years ago, when we met with Berryessa and Castaic and those other water body managers. And it's just important to try and line up some of those resources now for an eventual introduction.
Thank you, Lisa and Leah. Can you go back one slide, Corey? There's a little dollar sign here on the right, and I just want to break that down. So a couple of years ago, we presented to the board, we did analysis of the revenues that come in for this program and how we spend the money. And we identified that over five years, we get local sticker, resident and visitor sticker revenue generates about $1 million over five years for the public sector. So that's for us to maintain the program and to pay for things that all the grants don't pay for and any additional needs. About half a million over that five-year period is generated for the private sector. So sticker sales are out there at local bait and tackle shops, hardware stores, even some individuals sell stickers because they live in a community with a lot of boaters, and they know a lot of visitors, or they're CTAs, certified tortoise ambassadors, and they sell stickers. And they get a percentage of every sticker sale. And for like a small bait and tackle shop, they can get $8,000, $10,000 a year of that revenue from sticker sales. If they're a busy tackle shop, that can go to a part-time staffer, keeping the lights on, health insurance, those kinds of things. So if we lose our sticker program, if we are no longer prevention program, we can't sell stickers, that's a direct hit not only to the public sector, for our department, for this program, but also for the private sector that relies on some of those sticker sales. Of that total amount of sticker revenue, 800,000 of that is generated by visitors. So if the lake gets temporarily shut down, or there's restrictions, some of those visitors might not come here to enjoy the lake, and that would, again, that's a loss of that revenue from those sources of funds. We get about 1.25 million from our state grants over that five-year period. And so that's money that comes from outside of the county, that comes here into the county. And our staff of ramp monitors, I talked about them earlier, there's about 15. And so they all live here, they spend all that money here that they get for working as ramp monitors from those state grants. And all of that would be lost as soon as there's a detection in our lake. And of course, ecosystem loss, we have no idea what those trickle-down or domino-impact losses would be. Next slide, please. So away from Debbie Downer. Okay, next steps. What do we need to do? So we provided you guys with a plan today and the public. We really want to ask for any review, comments, questions, if we're forgetting anything major on this plan and things we need to consider, and we want to incorporate that into the plan. And we really like to have a finalization date later this month. However, that's just, we're lots of wiggle room. We want to make sure that we create something that's useful, that we can have, that we can use as a guideline. And so any information or review, comments we have received for that, we'll take them. We are going to, within six months to a year, consolidate the website that was made for the plan development into our www.nomussels.com website, just to make sure it's easy for the public to access that information without having all these different websites out there. And then my question today for the board is, is this plan need to be adopted by the board? It's not a grant requirement on our end. It hasn't really been indicated by the state Fish and Wildlife that we need to have an official local adoption. So it's up to you guys if we feel like that's something we need to do, but I didn't know where to go for that, and so I'm leaving it open. We can have this plan. It's probably going to be iterative in some aspects, we're kind of going to be adding it, it'll evolve sometime. We can always bring that back to the board for an updated adoption, but that was my question for you guys today for that. And last slide, thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you so much to our consultants. I really appreciate working with you guys, it was great. Your expertise is phenomenal, and being able to have help in facilitating and making this reality. I sleep a little bit better at night, knowing we have something on the books here that'll help us if we get an inspection. So I really appreciate it. And again, thank you to all the ramp monitors that make this program work.
Thank you so much for your contribution also. Angela, I know this is a passion project for you, so we always appreciate hearing these presentations. I'm going to open it up to see if there's any questions or comments from the board. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much, everyone. I had the opposite effect. I stayed awake at night. I looked at that pretty report for a week before I took it home, and as important as it is, I don't recommend it for bedtime reading. Because I was scared. I was scared by what I read, and nothing I've heard here today actually gives me much comfort. If anything, it's worse to hear that we could actually pull the plug on our prevention funding on a mere report of a possible infestation is like pretty draconian. So to your question, you know, and we'll hear what the rest of the board says, but adoption of a plan, even though there's no deliverable that could come out of that adoption, seems very prudent and reasonable to me. Definitely migrating the website, although No Mussels, I did have a question. I did like the microsite, because they had the Clear Lake SEO term in there. So as we look to merge those, question is if our analytics are clear on the No Mussels site, that people can find it easily from a Clear Lake search, as opposed to something that is clearly a national problem. The funding asks, I thought, were very on point, and you know, we're not here with any proposals today, but I definitely would perk my ears up to anything that was brought back later on that. And the only real takeaway I got is, it's an if/when question, but it really sounds like the way it's been phrased here in this report, and the necessity of this county to develop reserves to respond, it's more of a when question than an if question. And it's like, the biggest threat seems to be the same thing that is one of the big success stories, you know, the size and the quality of our bass fishery, and the sheer number of boats that are coming in to take advantage of that also pose, very ironically, the greatest risk to the continuation of that fishery and to the protection of the Clear Lake environment as a whole. So I just want to thank you for the overarching vision. If there's a way we can get actual print copies out distributed without necessarily, you know, slapping people up for print costs or something like that, I mean, I think we need to get this word out, and the website's important and all that, but that report slapped me upside the head. And when you come back for those asks later down the road, I'm going to be citing that chapter and verse. So thank you for bringing that.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Not sure if the website works, if that's not correct. I just can't seem to find it. I was able to find the prevention site, but not that one specifically. There's a couple of things in there. We talked about Yolo County flood control, and I'm sure as I say that exact phrase, that Director DeLeon is probably rolling his eyes. I know he has been in front of the Yolo County Flood Control Board, asking for assistance, letting them know, this will affect your farmers, this will affect your equipment, this will affect your dam. They just kind of blew him off at that point in time. So I would definitely be open for a new conversation, but unfortunately, the history of those conversations have resulted in nothing, and I think that they're ready to take action when action is needed, but not looking to put any resources in the prevention part of it, which to me is the most important part. And so I want to really focus on the prevention part, because I think having a plan if they're here is one thing, but we're also kind of screwed at that point. There's going to be a lot of issues that slowly accumulate exponentially, that will impact us economically and biologically in our lake and our ecology around the lake. So I would love to see a, there was a lot of conversation about things we can do to enhance our docks, our piers, our boat ramps and things like that. I would love to see a strategic plan of sorts on how to implement those things, what the potential costs are, so that we can see maybe year by year, what are we doing to enhance those things? Because a part of it is under our control, but a part of it is also a little bit of luck, because there's got to be 1,000, if not more, private ramps from all the onshore housing that is available to private people. And so I think a little bit of that is based on personal activity. Are you going to actually take care and do the right thing with your boat versus going to a public ramp where, at this point, we have individuals that will check your boat and make sure you have the stickers and all that? If we catch somebody in the lake without a sticker, that's too late, things of the kind. So I think prevention is still something that we can control and that we should control, and that we look at enhancing in any way possible. In the past, when they did the Save the Lake tax, that never went through. I know they were talking about gates that you had to pay, and obviously, there would be some things that you need to check off before you get those gates to open up for you. I don't know if that's still an option, but I think we need to look at all those options. Couple of things that I did not see within the context of, it was under legal authority and other stuff, but still, I saw PG&E was in there, which is a little awkward, with PG&E and quagga mussels. But I didn't see any mention, other than at the bottom where there's ramps, or there's connections to the lake. I didn't see at what point is the conversation or their collaboration with cities and tribes. We're all going to be impacted by this, not just the county, not just the state, but how do we make sure that everybody who has stake in dealing with this plan in a very proactive way, if we end up with quagga mussels? What are we all doing together, rather than just what's the county doing with the state? We got to make sure it's all hands on deck, and I don't see that in here unless I missed it. I'm sure the conversations may be happening, but if it's not in the plan, then when, at what point, do we involve all of those jurisdictions to have the conversation? So that was what I saw was missing, but I'd love to see a strategic plan in elevating our prevention, because I get it, I'm certain that there's a point where the state will say, you can't have prevention dollars, but we have restoration dollars, or we have ways to manage dollars. So it's maybe just a different bucket that we get access to, but at the same time, let's see what we can do to put as many resources behind prevention right now.
And have you made this presentation to the Fish and Wildlife Committee? Or, I know you're on that committee, and so you're, I'm sure you're having these conversations.
I presented it at the August meeting, the last meeting, we didn't have a quorum, so we didn't meet, but I presented it, I showed them the website, I showed them where the plan is, and yeah, they have received that. And Greg Gusty was involved, he's the chair of the Fish and Wildlife Committee, and he was involved in the original quagga mussel advisory committee that kind of formulated the ideas for the sticker prevention program. And then, can I respond to any of, Bruno or?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you. So Yolo County is definitely at the table, they participated in the development of this. The state is actually pushing them to improve their prevention, their monitoring. Previously, we had done monitoring in Indian Valley, and the state really is pushing them to be more involved in Indian Valley and Cache Creek Dam monitoring, and to develop more response actions. So we're really thankful the state is getting them more involved and pushing them to do that. And there's about 700 private ramps out there, or you know, access points, so that could be a dirt road next to someone's ranch, or outbuildings. And so it's really hard to enhance prevention efforts through mechanical barriers. So my worry is putting in gates or some restrictions that prevent access, people are just going to go find another way to get in. And it's really hard for us to manage all of those that are on private properties. What we can do, and what we're doing now with the shoreline ordinance, so Chapter 23, we are updating that ordinance, and we are including requirements for all property owners that have boat access or dock structures to comply with the Chapter 15, the quagga mussel inspection program. And the way they do that is, if a boat is launched without a sticker, not only is the boat owner, but also the property owner of that access point can get a citation. That's the way we can start with that shoreline ordinance updates. It hasn't gone through legal yet, we haven't had public comment, we're still finishing the internal review of that, but we're looking at ways that we can address some of those private property access issues, and complying with quagga mussel prevention through other PG&E, because they have Lake Pillsbury, they do monitoring up there for quagga mussels, because the state requires it, so we actually get data from them. But we do our own monitoring up there also. And as far as connections to the lake between the cities and tribes, so all the cities and the tribes were invited to participate with the development of this plan at every aspect. I am planning to go to the cities to present the same plan, and get their feedback, and get their comments to address for this. One of the recommendations that the consultants talked about was doing more collaborative, strategic, like stakeholder meetings and community meetings, and that's, I think, what you were kind of touching on, is maybe every year, twice a year, have a quagga mussel response, or planning meeting where we invite anybody that could be impacted by an introduction or impacted by prevention efforts. Meet together, do some updates, talk about potential funding, who wants to be partners, and you know, looking at what are new water bodies that are infested, or what has somebody done in their water body, or what has somebody done to increase monitoring. So I think that's an avenue where we can make those connections and involve the partners that you spoke to. Prevention plan, so we currently have a prevention plan that was approved by the state in order for us to get state funding, and that was approved, I updated it, and it was approved in 2019. It's due for an update in next year, so '24, '25. So in that prevention plan, we've been told by the state, it needs to be more robust, you need to do more monitoring, you have to have more things in there about what you guys are doing for prevention, or where are the barriers for enhancing prevention program. So some of the things that you talked about, Supervisor Sabatier, will be included in that prevention plan, and that's something I can come back to the board and talk on, and then also have public input that can improve that plan update. I think that was all my responses, and thank you for your comments.
And can you talk more about what it would look like locally to have the stickers for the non-motorized boats?
Yeah, so we were trying to figure that out, but there'd probably be a specific sticker just for, say like kayaks, or there's like belly boats, there's non-motorized boats, especially over the last few years. When this program started, you know, people had kayaks and they kind of stayed there, but they didn't really travel as much with kayaks and canoes, and there wasn't as many tournaments. Now we get, you know, 10 tournaments that are all kayaks, or belly boat tournaments. We had a belly boat tournament in Highland Springs. Belly boats are kind of inflatable things that people sit in, they go fishing, and they collapse, and they could store a lot of water during travel. But they don't have a motor, so they're not trailered, so they're not required to get a sticker in the current ordinance. So it's definitely something that we need to work out. Somebody that lives on Clear Lake that has a kayak that sits under their dock, you know, and they use during the summer with their kids, maybe there's a lifetime sticker, and every year they can verify it, or every five years they can verify that that kayak stays here and doesn't leave. These are all ideas we have to work through, but we want to make sure that, you know, we're not charging ordinance fees for local residents, but still considering pathways for visitors. And we just haven't been able to work that out yet.
Right, but we do have residents that move around from our bodies of water that are within the county. And I've taken my kayaks to Wyoming and Idaho and Montana, and had to stop every single time and get an inspection and a new sticker, but I'm happy to do it. So I think that's definitely something that we should continue to talk about, too.
Thank you. I will say that I've reached out to the state for guidance on that, and because our grant and the State Division of Boating and Waterways is focused on boats and motors, they don't have a lot of information and guidance for that.
I think the other states do, though.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Supervisor Crandall?
You mentioned kayaks and the stickers. Were you referring to boats as well that are already on the lake that don't have, or that have an outdated sticker? Did you mention that, or did I miss that, or was that just kayaks that you mentioned?
Well, we talk about boats, if they have a motor, they have to get a sticker. So if they move with a trailer or a motor, then our current ordinance says they have to get a sticker. So if they're a resident boat, they get a sticker, a resident sticker, but if they're a visitor boat with a motor, it has to be trailered.
What I mean is, let's say that in, like the Keys, for example, there's a boat that's been sitting in the water with a 2019 sticker, what happens from that point?
Yeah, so they're outdated, they could get a citation, they need to get a new sticker.
All right.
Yeah.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So you mentioned you've had conversations with the cities and the tribes, but I still don't see how they are implemented in the plan.
They were invited.
And I want to make sure that they're embedded in the plan, so that when all of us here are gone, and somebody pulls out a plan, they know exactly who they're supposed to bring to the table, rather than thinking that they know who they should be inviting, and then people are missing from the table. So I would love to see that be more implemented, and once we find something, who are the people that need to come to the table, or who are invited to come to the table, to discuss how we're going to mitigate the potential outbreak of the mussels? And I just don't see that, and I want to make sure that that gets added in.
Noted it, thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I want to add-
Yeah, I want to echo that, too, for a couple of reasons. One, I heard you're in the middle of re-scoping the shoreline ordinance. Both cities have shoreline ordinances, and when I was still on city council, my understanding of where the county jurisdiction started and where the city's jurisdiction picked up was limited at best. And this sounds like one of those things, if the county is going to be the lead agency for the response, the cities and the county both have to come to some common understanding, like, oh, where the water's edge is where the county picks up, or is it this near shore, you know, whatever these zoning classifications are. It's kind of confusing. So if we're in the middle of redoing our shoreline ordinance anyway, it's very much timely and important that we try to encourage the city to take a look at their respective shoreline ordinances to make sure we're in full alignment to the extent possible. Quick question on the docks, though. So it sounds like hard structures are a bigger target for the QZ mussels than, say, tulie beds and what have you. So in addition to whatever inspection might be for boats attached to, you know, the 700 docks or something like that, are we currently inspecting the docks themselves for infestation? Is there a potential need to up our game on abatement of substandard structures, if only to remove that amount of hardscape from being potential infestation sources?
So Quagga zebra mussels, they like hard substrates. They can colonize on any substrate. We have monitoring, artificial monitoring, about 20, 16 to 20 locations around the lake, and then we have locations that we monitor on dark docks, hardscapes. Whenever, like Lakeport, for example, takes out their docks at the end of season, we go down there and we check the whole underside of those floating docks because that's prime area for Quagga zebra mussel settlement. And it's easy then for us to run our hands over it, look and see, is it dirt? Is it some other sort of accumulation or is it a Quagga mussel? We check all of our buoy lines. We go out and move buoys as AIDS Navigation Program. And then because Quagga and zebra mussels are found on plants, and that's a great point about tulies, I do sampling for aquatic plants as part of the Aquatic Plant Management Program, and I'm always looking on those plants' materials to see if there's any settlers there. In addition, our partners at California Department of Food and Ag, you see them out there in the airboats. Every day, they're throwing grapples and they're sampling, and they know what Quagga zebra mussels look like. So we have a great partner already embedded on the lake doing monitoring every day out there, you know, numerous teams that are monitoring for that. The state has told us that we need to improve our monitoring program, and so part of our prevention update is to do that. So we monitor for the juveniles, we do some toes in the water column, we do substrates, we do walk on shorelines, look at rocks. We do all that, but the state has indicated they want to see more efforts, and so we're working with them to figure out what exactly that looks like, what the coverage looks like and the frequency. I hope that answered your questions, Supervisor Green. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Crandall?
I just wanted to add and elaborate why I asked that question earlier, because I assumed and thought maybe that some folks that just keep their boat on the lake and never take it out in their residence probably thought maybe they had a lifetime sticker or something. So I just wanted to elaborate why I asked that, that's all.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for the public. Do we have anyone in the chambers or in the Zoom room?
Scott Harder, Lake County Special Districts Administrator. I just wanted to be brief and voice my support for this program, this plan. As Supervisor Sabatier noted, we really want to keep focusing on prevention. We manage two of 17 surface water treatment plants on the lake, and as was noted, there are hundreds of private water intakes as well. And the impact of the infrastructure that would happen due to an infestation is just, it's unfathomably bad. There aren't words big enough to describe how bad it would be. The infrastructure improvements needed just for our plants, you know, you're seeing in other areas, a couple hundred thousand dollars for initial capital infrastructure improvements to make changes to your water intakes, which would change maybe the screening or put disinfection points in there, UV radiation. You know, some of those methods don't work with the higher flow rates that some of the larger surface water treatment plants have, so they have to look at other, more expensive ways to prevent further damage, drawing those villagers, getting those mussels into the plant, into the pipes, into the distribution system, keeping them out on the raw water structure itself. And then there's increased costs for monitoring. You know, we'd be monitoring on a very regular basis. There's O and M costs, which would go way up. We had divers out at our North Lakeport intake last summer. Actually, I think some of the footage was in the video. Those divers cost $5,000 a day just to come and show up on the lake. They need to be here for a few days at least to do cleaning and maintenance. Our intake currently pipe is, it's about 900 to 1,000 feet long, cleaning the whole inside of that pipe. Complicated, expensive, so can't say enough how much we support this effort, how much we support any prevention effort. So just wanted to put in my two cents.
Thank you, Director Harder. Do we have anyone else from the public or anyone in the Zoom room? Okay, then I'll close public input and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
I just wanted to ask, because I saw that you wrote down what I stated, but I don't know that there was full consensus from the board. I didn't hear it, so I just wanted to make sure before I changed something that the board wasn't in approval of.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with collaborating with everyone that's got access to the lake. Those opportunities. Thank you. Yeah, so I'm in agreement with that recommendation you made. Also, just have a moment. Having a plan, you know, long-term is very important. We've talked about the Quagga mussel sticker prices before, those types of things. I think prevention is the number one thing we need to continue on, but I also think that with the recommendation of having some funds set aside, you know, I think there's an opportunity. We need to look at something like that at mid-year budget, just to get something set aside, because, you know, as Supervisor Green said, it's not if, it's when. Potentially across, you know, the states it's been happening, we need to be prepared for it and have some funds in there to be able to respond. So I know we have some cannabis funds in the risk reduction area that we, you know, could consider. I know I'm throwing that out there right now, but, you know, I just think that, you know, it's so important. You know, the really thing, obviously, the Bass tournaments bring the economy stuff to us, very important, but the thing that I'm really concerned about is 66% of our water users being affected by this and long-term forever. So I think that's the most important thing to focus on. Always wanting to have an economy, but you can't survive without water getting to your residents. So I think that really concerns me, that we need to be proactive. And then I guess the other question is, you talked about dip tanks. I had never heard about the dip tanks. Are there grant opportunities out there to get a dip tank? Or I never heard of it before, so I'm just bringing it up.
Yeah, anything that's a capital infrastructure item like that, there are sources of funds. They do require a lot of partnerships and, of course, some local match. I've been successful with getting grants to sustain the prevention program and then some federal funds to work on this plan and other things. I have confidence and I'm going to be getting grant funds as much as possible and reaching out and working with the partnerships, especially because we know that there's not really that rainy day fund from the state side, at least now. But yeah, that is definitely something that we're going to maximize and go after, particularly because Clear Lake is such a draw as a western water body. And so it's not just important for us and our economy, but for the whole western region. So it's going to require a lot of finessing and partnerships with western water bodies and western agencies to protect the whole region. So it's a little more of a heavy lift, but it's something that's doable so we can get grant funds to, you know, maybe $2 million to put in two of these really cool dip tanks, which are also water conservation types of systems, and so that would be ideal. They're really cool. You should look up videos on your break of YouTube of the dip tanks because, yeah, that's...
Awesome. Supervisor Green?
Last quick question. So you're probably at the tail end of this consulting contract. Is there enough in the gas tank that we could encourage or beg if the city managers would agree? I think both city councils should hear this stuff, if only to start getting their heads around what a potential city response might be. I know Lakeport, having participated in this study, definitely would be interested. So is the scope of the contract just end with today's presentation as far as the consultant? If so, do you need a bump to encourage additional outreach? This is kind of watershed. This is like landmark stuff, and I think we all need that little sleepless night, if only to spur the next action. So do you have the opportunity or the funding or the bandwidth to do a presentation like this to the cities?
So this grant is, I believe, going until June. We were supposed to get a, like an intern to help us do some outreach work and couldn't recruit somebody for two years, so we got the grant extended. So we have a little extra funds for that. It's up to the consultants, Lisa and Leah. You guys are awesome. I'd love to have you present at the cities. But I think we can prioritize that even if we didn't have funding through the grant. Yeah.
We would make sure it would happen no matter what.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
I just had a random thought. Number one, sea planes, if you're looking at kayaks and other things like that, they also have the ability to fly from one place to another. I would suspect it would dry up, but I don't know enough. But the second is, do you work with CAL FIRE to figure out how they're making sure that their nets, as they're catching water from one lake and then moving on to another lake in order to try to put out fires? Is there a process to ensure that there's no sharing of these potential microbial mussels?
Yeah, so they have a whole protocol for fire mitigation equipment and tools that are used, where they go through a process of decontamination. There is audits or reviews of that, but you know, sometimes during the seasons, the wildfire season, there's fires all over and they're overlapping, they're going from there to there. Is a plane a high-risk vector? If there's water there, they're up high, they're going really fast. I defer to the expertise of you guys. I don't know how much scientific studies we have. I will say that there is a protocol that CAL FIRE, Forest Service, they all follow, particularly when they are taking water from a water body with like a water tanker truck that may have come from a different county. They have to have a third basin. So water goes into the basin and then water comes out, so there's never equipment crossing that is directly going straight into a water body to limit the potential spread. But again, during times of fast wildfire mitigation, you know, we hope the process is completely, is followed, but I don't know what studies have been out there that actually have audited that exact.
So Lee and I are just kicking off a national project with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to assess the risk of sea planes and aquatic invasive species. We've just started that, but they are a risk. They have contributed to the spread of one particular species, Alodia, in Alaska. Most of the floats that are on those planes usually hold up to a quart of water even after they've been pumped out by a pilot. And so they are not bone dry when they are flying, and even at elevation and at certain speeds, they could travel long distances and still have a quart of water in them when they land on a water body. So we'll be assessing the risk on that. It's about a year and a half project, but sea planes are an interesting one.
Because I watch them land and take off, wondering where they came from and where they're going, and just wanted to ask the question. So I'm glad that you're doing the study.
Birds have also been shown to be vectors of invasive species in times, too.
Oh, come on.
Sorry.
They're going to need a permit.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation today.
Thank you so much for having us.
Yes. All right, so our last open session item is calendars. Are you ready down here at this end?
So tomorrow, I have the North Shore Business Association, Middle Creek Project Delivery Team meeting. Senator McGuire's coming to the museum. I'll go on that tour if that happens. Worth is in the evening. Thursday, I have Tango Mike. Friday, I'll be going to the Upper Lake Elementary Playground opening. Monday, CIO meeting, and then the Farm, Ranch and Rural Ad Hoc Committee that I'll be attending as well.
And then back here next Tuesday.
Wednesday, I will be having another conversation. I feel like there's good progress being made with LG Sonics. I could bring something back here to the board. Middle Creek Restoration with the Army Corps is also meeting a little bit later on that day. I may show up at the Worth meeting just to help out with the PEG TV stuff. I'll let you know if that's the case. Starting out Thursday with Judges Breakfast, moving on to the Pick Count Committee. I believe we are looking at January 27th and allowing for the continuing counting of the, sorry, 25th, January 25th, and allowing the counting to continue through the 30th. I'll provide more information as we go. I did, because I'm working as a board member for Hope Rising, I did make sure that you all had in your inboxes an invitation to the Innovative Summit that's happening over at Twin Pine Casino, and that is October 27th, I believe. So please make sure to take a look at that, see if you can participate. And then there is a First Five Lake Commissioner Retreat happening on Friday. I'll be attending that as the alternate, but want to make sure I keep track of what it is that they're working on so I can jump in with both feet whenever I need to. I am also on Monday, meeting with the new chancellor again, that he's having a meet and greet over at Lake County Campus, so I'll go and hang out over there. I want to talk to him about a few things that I've been working on with the local school district and fire districts. Looks like I might have a Hope Rising meeting as far as financials go, but meeting with our CIO, preparing for our meeting on the 24th.
Down here?
Last Tuesday, we had Lake County Ag Advisory. We had a couple items. They did take a peek at the Cannabis Task Force recommendations as far as the ordinance rewrite, and they also got a little overview of the state water board's emergency regulations, but no real action was taken on that, but they did get a first look at it as far as the regs themselves. And then a little later in the week, when we got, the first map was actually posted of the scope of those ERIGs. I also shared it with the Ag Advisory Committee for their information. And I want to apologize, Supervisor Sabatier and I did have a first sit-down kind of with the state water boards to kind of figure out what was going on. We were anticipating the report back today, and that was the board's direction, but as it turns out, we didn't have a lot of takeaways from that meeting, so I just want to share that that happened. But this Thursday at 5:30 PM here in the board chambers, the state water boards will be here for the first listening session, so that's going to be in-person only. So those people that are interested in those draft regulations, you're going to get your first real opportunity to have some interpersonal contact on Thursday. They'll also be doing a Zoom-only session, I believe, on the 24th. And I do anticipate we'll have an item on the 24th discussing that. I do see Senator McGuire will be here tomorrow. I do hope to make that at the museum. Friday, at the lake campus of Mendocino College, I was able to attend the Native Learning Symposium about native plants and foods. I found it fascinating. I really want to thank Mendocino College, both here and in Ukiah and at their other campus centers for putting on that symposium. It's very important for newbies like me to pick up on that. Last Thursday, we did have a Emergency Medical Care Committee meeting. I think we even got, I don't think of, did we get quorum? I'm trying to remember. So we were dangerously close to getting quorum, but we're still working on it. But it was very good to see everyone kind of get in the same room and get acquainted, and Dr. Dewan was there, and so good work happening there. Sunday, the One Team One Dream Competition was at Sopa Reis. It was very well attended, and I know Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Crandall were there as well. And, you know, it was a great turnout and some really good applicants and some really good prizes, so I think the board can feel good about their support of that. And then lastly, last night, we had another Community Visioning Forum Committee, kind of rehashing where we've been over the last year and what the next steps might be and what recommendations might be made to the board. I don't think we made any hard choices last night. We'll probably be coming back for another debrief session on that. And I think that's also on Friday, the First Five Lake Retreat. I'll also be attending that, so thank you.
Okay, just want to report on some meetings we had last week. We had attended the APC and, well, the APC meeting. We took a tour of the multi-use path down to Middletown, took a little ride towards South County, which was nice with the LTA and the APC Board. You know, so that was, you know, just a good trip to look at South County. So I want to thank, you know, the LTA and APC Board for doing that. Obviously, county project being worked on down there with Caltrans grants, so we'll be happy when that multi-use path is finished on, and like I said, when it's done, it'll be great. Had the RRA meeting yesterday. I thought it was a really good meeting. It was a long meeting, but, you know... It was a long meeting, but you know, we continue to, to move on. But I thought it was a very productive meeting. Obviously transitioning back to in-person meetings, always a challenge, but I think you just, we just get a little more work done when we're all there in the room, having those conversations. Board meeting this week, let's see, I did have, on my agenda, Disaster Council meeting. I, I don't think I'm going to make the Disaster Council meeting. I gotta let Rob know that. Leah, we are doing a cultural burn down on our, our reservation with Tara. They're all out there prepping today and tomorrow. We'll be doing that on Thursday, so that's going to be a good event. So I'm going to spend most of that day doing that, obviously. I see, like I said, I checked in this morning, everybody was down there getting ready to go and it's just something we've been looking forward to for a while. Meeting with CAO on Friday. Moving to Saturday and then back here on Monday, I do. Yeah, that's all I got on here right now. Unless I missed something. But I would like to just, you know, calendars events, I don't know if this is the place to do it, but I'm just gonna, I'm gonna do it today. Talk to my board members, let CAO know it. But I will, I'm going to make an announcement that I am not going to be seeking a third term for the District One Supervisor. You know, hey, it's fourth quarter in my life and I've got some things I want to get done. So, you know, like I said, I just want to make that announcement, getting peppered with those questions all over, making the announcement today and then I'll follow up with any phone calls or questions or emails in the future. But obviously, yeah, I just wanted to make that announcement. Thank you.
Okay, did you want to?
Michael covered it.
Okay. I, I do want to report out on, when I was in Redding on the 5th, at the Wildfire and Forest Resiliency Task Force meeting, it was the all-day event. I was there with Terry Logstand, our climate officer, and Clerk was there and also Tara was there. And Tara was on one of the panels with the Executive Committee and the, and Secretary Crowfoot, talking about the regenerative fuels work that we're doing in our county. And it, it made quite an impression on everybody. Lindsay Daly did an amazing job. We couldn't have had better representation from our county for this state governor's appointed task force. So it was pretty incredible. And, you know, the burn ban is going to be lifted, I think, next?
Monday, I think.
Yeah, next Monday, the 23rd. I think it's the 23rd.
Yes.
So we'll be hearing that from Air Quality, but the, the window is opening for this fuels work and we're going to see a lot of burn projects, a lot of cultural burn projects with Tara. They're kind of scheduled all over, so it's pretty incredible to see this work happening and also being recognized at the state level. So tonight, today, after our meeting, I have a California Women in Ag potluck at that ranch. I was at the Kelseyville Business Association last night. Tomorrow, oh, we're going to do a gender review today, if you want to be part of that. Because tomorrow I'll be meeting with Senator McGuire for the Home Hardening Project, having lunch with Clear Lake City Council member. Going to make the cross-country meet at Thailand Springs. And Thursday, I have been invited. So I want to show up in the morning for the burn and then the Great Shakeout is at nine, I'm sorry, 10:19. I've been asked that we take some pictures under our desks today during the, when the meeting, in between closed session at some point and send them to our partners at NCO so they can post them for the Great Shakeout on Thursday. Guys don't look impressed, but I promised we'd send something.
Can we use a doorway?
We'll figure it out. Then I.
The stand-up desk.
The law library. I will cover you at Disaster Council. And then I've got the Cockberry Council in the evening. Friday, meeting with OPR about the ABGP grant, lunch with the constituent. Saturday is Heroes for Health and Safety. Or something else on Saturday. Oh, Sunday is the Cobb School Garden fundraiser gala at Boutique. I'll be there. Monday, a meeting with CAO Parker in the morning and then it's going to be homecoming week, so I want to be at the night rally. See you there. And then back here on Tuesday. And then like I said, the burn ban will be lifted on the 23rd, so we'll have more information from that, from Air Quality. And the burn permits should be available online at that point. Anything else to add? Okay, then we are going to move into closed session. We have three items. 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation, County Council. 8.2, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. FERC Project Number 77, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. And 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. Center for Biological Diversity at All, V. County of Lake at All. Thank you for joining us. We're going to move into closed session.